All right, well, uh, 'cause I understand there may be some here interested in this topic. Start with the special town meeting agenda item. Andrew, if you could start with your position.
Yeah, so basically after our last meeting, we had set the special town meeting date. I had a discussion with the members of the finance team and they had a big concern over the timing of it because the, um, having a town meeting that late would delay their ability to have the tax rate certified and thus delay the issuance of this, of the, uh, tax bills by a month. By delaying it by a month, basically gives us a cash flow problem as far as the time because our bit, some of our really big expenses come in February, including payment, second payments to the schools. So by kind of delaying that puts us in a position where we might have to borrow, borrow funds in order to, to pay our bills. So I think the easiest way to move forward would be to basically delay the town meeting by a month, or special town meeting by a month, just to get over the, the end of the calendar year and then have it as soon as possible after that.
And I know we talked a little bit about some preliminary month numbers in an email, but at the time it sounded like the potential impact could affect revenues for an extended period of time and thus we may have to borrow, that would equate to a financing cost of almost twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah, so if we, if say we had a giant, you know, it's because that month we drove a big financial burden. You know, each month is about, you know, we have a twelve million dollar tax levy. Let's just say, you know, we have to, we have a million dollars worth of bills that, that one month. You know, if we have to delay, or if we have to borrow a quarter of a million dollars in order to meet the financial obligations, you're looking at, um, up to twelve thousand dollars if you're paying five percent interest on that amount, which is kind of, if you don't have to, why put yourself in that position?
The other opportunity is, and I don't know if the timing allows due to our requirements now, but moving it up.
Right, the other, that would be the other option.
Okay, do we know based on the timing how far up we could move it and still meet our minimum posting requirements and deadlines?
Need a fourteen day posting of the warrant before the special town meeting.
Okay.
So.
So that's by the end of the month and then we need what, at least a week to put that together?
Right.
What was our open warrant period anyway previously posted?
End of this week.
Into this week? That wouldn't necessarily have to change, so we just have to see if we wanted to try to schedule it before Thanksgiving versus?
I do and I don't. Uh, the other concern obviously is the marijuana bylaws, moratorium runs out in December and I don't think we're gonna have it together that quickly. I, I think we can do it before December, but I think if we try to rush this and step it up, because that's, that was my obviously first thought was to step it up. Um, but I think then we're gonna have to have another meeting. We'll put the bylaws off until annual town meeting, which is not a good idea. So I was thinking either in December or January preferably, you know, sooner than better, but I don't think we do in November.
The other thing is, if I'm correct, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to cut you off, I hear you. I just wanted to clarify, the special town meeting affects their ability to do tax rate only if we add additional tax levy stuff into the budget. Otherwise the numbers are already set in stone.
For the most part, but you need to report all of your town meeting votes to the DOR, whether they're financial or not.
Okay, so you have to report all town meeting votes?
As part of, as part of setting the tax rate.
That have occurred up to the date you submit those documents, because you can't put in votes for something that's gonna happen a month later. So based on what date do they define when they have to report any meetings to that date? Is it the other question I have, because that's really just how much time does it take the town clerk to say, okay, these are the items, these were the votes. We usually don't have more than like four or five items on a special town meeting, if I'm correct. It's not exhaustive. And then they just roll that into the paper, so that's like a few days delay, not a, a month. And it may not even be much of a delay if everybody knows and they can prepare properly on that side of just the vote, recording of the vote, I'm not, financially, I understand that could be a whole reset. But if we're thinking we're not at a point to put anything that would be tax appropriation on it, in other words, we go, if we think money, maybe it's a stabilization fund thing, then it doesn't really play into the tax rate. So I'm just trying to find out, and I'm listening in case I'm wrong, so I'm just trying to, this is what's in my head and maybe I'm missing something.
But I, I think if we are intended to, to replace that engine, that's, that's not gonna be a, you know, a funded, that's gonna have to be.
Well, it won't be tax appropriation, it's five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's still something.
Still a stabilization, initial bond payment or whatever you call down payment.
Still gonna require a bond, it's gonna require, we're payments on the bond, those will probably be on the tax rate.
But not till next fiscal year, the payments.
It's still reportable.
It's still gonna be reportable and back confirmed before we can file the tax rate. And so if we put the tax, if we put the meeting off after it's filed, we're okay. It's gonna wind up your bond, I think, that's the intent of it. And that will impact the tax rates up in the future, but still, it's gonna have to be reported and resolved before, this is what I, I spent a lot of time trying to understand it, but.
So they have to report something that was approved that doesn't affect this year's tax levy?
Because it was a vote taken, yes.
And it would have been a vote that was taken prior to then submitting their documentation?
Right.
So if we move it to December seventh, they're saying they're submitting the documentation on the fourth, then they don't have to account for that at this stage of their processing. In other words, you can't know the future. There's a point where, and I'm just curious where that lands. So why do we have to wait till February, I guess, is, or January, is my question?
I think it's on the calendar year.
So if a meeting is scheduled within the calendar year, we need to wait to finalize our tax rate?
That doesn't seem to make sense.
Well, it might not make sense, but it doesn't mean it's not true. I'm just trying to, just better understand it, because from my position, there were definitely two items on here that we've been trying to work through, through more than one town meeting already, whether special town meeting, two annual town meetings, whether it was solar, whether it was the marijuana stuff. By not acting on it, we're almost continuing to prohibit it. And we already had a town meeting vote said you can't prohibit certain things. And state law is really not big fan of prohibiting solar, so we've got to also consider that. How much are we holding off other people and their own personal projects or plans? Is, if we keep pushing this out month after month after month, or pushing out another, you know, trying to get another, uh, moratorium to go extend another however many months, at some point, we just gotta sit down and say, this is it, let's do it. And we gotta make it so that we realize we are representing the entire town, the town's almost fifty fifty. So yeah, nobody's gonna walk away saying, I got exactly what I wanted, but no one should feel like they got nothing either. But we can't keep pushing it off, we gotta, that's where I'm coming from.
Right, and I think that if you said that January eighth was the day of the town meeting, I think that it's a safe date to say that that's when it's gonna happen. That puts us at after the calendar year, after the tax bill's been sent, after the tax rate's been sent. And you're only talking about another month, three weeks, four weeks after your initial date? How much it was pushed when I had suggested the November thirteenth date?
If you understand the solar industry, one month could make all the difference on your potential revenue when you file for things. If you understand the smart program that's going out right now, the minute they open the window, you might have three days to sign up and then you lose all potential incentive through that program. Anybody that's interested in solar and us finally being able to close a solar bylaw, that month could make all the difference in them being able to actually earn the revenues they're hoping for. So I'm just trying to put in perspective, thirty days could mean nothing if three days was the difference to somebody. So I'm just trying to, it's, and I'm not, I'm not saying that it's not, what you're saying isn't right. I'm not saying that we should or shouldn't just say, you know what, it sucks, but this is where we're at. Let's plan on spending the extra twelve thousand in financing if that's what it comes to and then maybe realize it was only three thousand. I mean, I'm just, it also depends on the arrangements you make with the people that you pay. I mean, I got a letter right here about assessments and they say, if you think you might be late, just give us a, a heads up, don't wait till the last minute and after you're late, tell us. So maybe we speak to them and say, is this big bill something you can wait until we get to that next month because of this issue? I'm just, that's all, I just, that's where I'm coming from, but I don't want to speak for the board. I just wanted to get out what was on my mind.
It just seems odd that, you know, at this point, you know, we're talking about three weeks when it's been since, you know, special town or, uh, annual town meeting. I haven't seen any, any push for anything to happen. Now it's, now it's, uh, right on the, uh, right on the front burner, it has to happen December fourth.
Actually, if you remember, we wanted it to happen before Thanksgiving and you told us that Thanksgiving's a week earlier, so we went to December fourth because it was too soon to put the time in to get the bylaw together. And you know, I've been working with the planning board to trying to set up these joint meetings so we could work together and get good bylaws together, so it's not one independent board doing one thing and another board doing the other. I've been doing that since town meeting, reaching out, trying to see what we could do to work together and get this. So it's not like this has just been sitting on the side burner and we haven't been doing anything. It's just that's the luck of the draw. Municipal life just doesn't happen overnight, it just doesn't.
I, I would like to see it in December if we can, because I would like to get the bylaws out before the end of the year. From what you were explaining to me before about how this is gonna work, as long as we're not gonna do anything to impact the tax rate, it's, I mean, this year anyways, it shouldn't make any, any difference. But having a vote before they set the tax rate, that makes us now for what I understand that. So we just put the meeting off till after the tax rate. We don't plan to impact the budget for this year certainly, realistically, probably not next year. So I don't, I don't see a problem in doing it in December. And I, I don't think we're gonna have a problem, especially with the marijuana bylaws, that it's not like, you know, they have something put together, we just need to work to modify it, not to, not to create it, they've already done that work. So I think that can be set by December, we suppose we'd have by, which is what we set forth to do over a year ago when we put the moratorium in effect. And it'd be nice to close the solar issue. I know it's frustrating, you don't want, you want to see it better planned further out and maybe.
Does the moratorium end on December thirty first?
Yes, it is.
And you need a town meeting to extend it, so you're kinda, you're locked in on that.
If it ends with nothing, how do we deny someone a permit? If we have nothing, plan out no rules for it, that, is that our, is it their fault? Somebody says, okay, I wanna sell. We, you know, we're putting ourselves in a predicament for that. And I've always assumed we would do that, front burner or not, in your eyes. I, to me, that would have to be done before December, so, um, I'd still like that to go. And if, if they say we absolutely can't, we absolutely can't. But I think we gotta push the date forward, uh, back a little bit after the tax rate and, um, select another meeting date and keep it sooner than later, keep, keep.
If we're legally allowed, but it sounded like he's saying calendar year is the thing, so any event that occurs in the month of December.
If that turns out to be the case.
Is supposed to be reported on the, something you're, and there may be a misunderstanding or misinterpretation of what is expected there, but I don't know.
If that turns out to be the case, we'll be here again in two weeks, we can move it again if we have to. But I'd rather set the date now and get it rolling with, with a, a deadline in mind and, and the intent to have that early, rather than push it off two more months.
I have a question. How far along are the assessors in getting the rate? We haven't had the classification hearing, I know that, but that kind of a formality, I, it seems like I read the date and I don't remember right offhand.
Well, this is something less so about them setting the rate as it is.
Well, they're all tied together.
Yeah, but as it is, the, the, anything we do has to be approved and, and.
Yeah.
Certified by the state, our votes, before the rate can be approved. So they could be all ready with the rate and if we don't have our, our meetings and our vote ratified, then they can't set the rate.
I, uh, I had the, I had the today sheet with me before I came down here, I just forgot to staple it to it, but basically at this point, they've submitted the LA thirteen, LA thirteen A, LA three, the LA four, the LA fifteen, I believe.
Okay. And the other question is, I was initially wondering why we couldn't just deal with the language articles, but the Department of Revenue holds things up because of language type articles? How can they do that? They, it has to be approved by the Attorney General.
But if we did our language type articles, only it doesn't change the fact that we have expense articles we need to cover, we really shouldn't wait till July, uh, till June.
Yeah, I under, no, I understand what you're.
Another meeting would be another expense of eight or ten thousand.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
I didn't wanna see it.
I, I understand, I'm not arguing.
Yeah, there's a lot to consider.
It just, it just seems ironic that they're worried about the language when, uh, the Attorney General has to approve them anyway and they won't have the approval probably by the time, uh, they have to approve all the stuff that go fall type issues.
So the other question I have is, I, I saw the email stating that if I'm correct here, if mailing the tax bills for third quarter happens after December thirty first, and it doesn't explain why both the third and fourth quarter bills would be due on May first. So in other words, you can't send a bill out stating that your third quarter bill is due two or three weeks after it normally is because you didn't send the mailing out two or three weeks after? I mean, I'm guessing it has to do with timelines of when it's mailed and how quickly you can force them to respond with a payment. So if you mail something in December, that's not due until February, two months, but then instead you'd send it three weeks later, couldn't you say it's due in March? Not still have to wait till May for both third and four? I'm just, my mind's coming from what seems logical and makes sense, but that has, again, nothing to do with how laws are written or interpreted after the fact and these rules, because I may be missing what they were discussing when they said, this is why the rule is, and I'm just, I don't understand it. So I, I admit that, but.
It didn't sound like they had an objection to us having the meeting after they set the rate, just that we mess up the rate beforehand, so I, I think it makes sense to move forward with the day after they set, um, still do it before the end of the year.
But the thing is, we don't know when the rate will be set. We just know they're expecting to submit it by the fifth or the sixth or the seventh or something like that.
Tax bills out on December thirty first, by December thirty first. I just don't know whether or not it's reporting requirements before setting the tax rate or the mailing of a bill, so. That's the question I can't answer right now, I don't know.
Well, it, it always sounded like they were objecting to the setting of the tax rate. That's who we're gonna follow up, so.
Right.
I, I believe if, if we, we push past their intended date for a set, that will be okay. We, like I said, if we had to, we can move it again, if we find out we're wrong. But I'd rather set a date, um, and keep, keep moving with it than, than wait another two weeks to set a date.
So you wanna provisionally say the eighteenth? Do I can answer that question?
Again, I, we didn't wanna get too late in the month, because then you run into all the vacation schedules of everybody in town, so that's why we're sticking closer to the fourth or maybe the eleventh. But you get to the end of December or even the first week or two in January and you're still dealing with everybody's chaotic holiday schedules, I'm just saying it.
I'd, I'd rather see eleven, if we can do eleven, keep it, for, I mean, eighteen's just one week out. That's, that's, there's a lot going on for people that, eleventh is still far enough removed. I think we're not gonna interfere in any holiday plans or functions for people.
And they chose that first week of December because they believe that's their only reasonable date to get their submission in, or that's just what they were thinking?
I can't answer their, but.
Answer.
I would think they have a scheduled routine they've been following for years. And, uh, I hate to ask them to try to alter that, it's easier for us to move the meeting.
Do we normally get the, uh, tax hearing, uh, in December? Isn't that normally when we, they come before us, early December, first week or two of December? Because there's still a couple steps after that, so that's why I'm saying it.
Tax classification's usually the second meeting in November.
And that's the last step before they have it approved, isn't it?
I don't know, it's the last step that they, that's the only step that they do from you guys. Usually it's the few, within the next two weeks, we have to certify tax rate. That'd be some additional filings that need to occur.
Could you also check to see if, if we move it to the eleventh and if they can see if they can make it so they can present something to us earlier in November, then we create a little bit more of a window for them to work between getting tax certified and us actually having the meeting on the eleventh? Unless there's some rule about the, the calendar year, like you said, that.
Right, yeah, I think that's just, I, you know, my understanding of it, it's the billing cycle, but that's, whether or not that means the date of the bill goes out, I'm not sure.
We'll find out.
And also please just confirm about the whole mailing process. Why if you miss the thirty first, it means you pretty much don't get paid again until May? We do have a meeting tomorrow night scheduled mostly pertaining to the joint planning board discussions. But we've kinda made a policy with less than forty-eight hours, we wouldn't add an agenda item like this onto it.
We do have a DPD meeting, that's Tuesday.
So we can start with a motion to cancel our previously scheduled special town meeting. I make a motion to that.
For December fourth?
That was your date we had set.
I will second it.
If I'm correct, if we cancel it, it means that even anything we've received under the open warrant period.
It's gone.
Would have to restart.
Yes, we'll have to set a new period, everything with it, but if, if we had to, we can, we can wait in setting a date and post it and pull a special light for it to set the date and answer some of these questions first. I don't care if we had to meet Thursday night and come in just for that, or Friday or whatever. We could still set it reasonably soon. We don't have to wait for a meeting, we can make our, we can just, you know, post a meeting and schedule it already. But I'd like to do that sooner than later. Does that sound more agreeable?
Uh-huh.
Just get some of these questions answered rather than have to re, possibly reschedule again. We can, um, get our answers and schedule it, as soon as we're ready, we'll post and schedule it.
What I, what I would suggest then is we just, we set a meeting, whether it's next Tuesday after DPW commission or if for some reason that one gets canceled or postponed, we still have this meeting and so we just table it for that. And then we determine if we revise the date of the meeting, but I wouldn't wanna cancel it, but leave the open warrant period the way it is. And if it comes in, great, if not, then we tell everybody you gotta start all over if we. And I don't know if legally, if we change the date to a later date, if we have to reopen the warrant or not, but we should review that just to make sure.
Do we have submissions yet for the warrant?
Um, I do have one citizen's petition.
So we'd only have one, one?
With or without signatures?
With signatures.
Okay, two hundred? It's got signatures?
Yeah.
We'll leave it at that, okay. You had something?
I just wanted to make sure that, that it was really heard, that if you don't have a meeting before the end of this year, the temporary moratorium will dissolve and you'll be left with no planning board.
No protection whatsoever.
There will be nothing other than what the state has in place. And when that vote was put to the town initially to put in a temporary moratorium, it was passed unanimously, that they wanted to make sure that there was protections in town. And admittedly, what was taken to town meeting was not agreed on, and I completely understand that, but there should be something in town, there should be some protections in town, because there was definitely a support and a definite feeling that that needed to happen.
This is why we're looking strongly to still do this in December.
So I strongly encourage you to try to keep it in December, if at all possible, because if you do move it, even if you move it, I think it's gonna be really hard to get that first week in January. And once you've given them two weeks of open, of nothing.
I completely agree.
You've just.
Completely agree.
You've given them too much open door. I, I don't, I'm not saying that against anybody at all, I'm just saying like, there's a lot of opportunity.
You, you left the window open, you never know.
And once you left the window open, you can't shut it very easily, so.
So, I mean, we'll, we'll set a date, it's just a quite, question of trying to get our timing better and find out that these last little details of what we can and can't do, um, before we set the date, and modify it twice. And I don't know, you know, if there's any doubt this, whether or not we can modify it without reopening the warrant. We'd have to find that out for sure within this week as well. And in that case, I'll remove my motion to, to vacate the date for now. There's, there's no reason we can't do it at the same time, we'll possibly modify it. If we can modify it, if someone's gathered two hundred signatures, I don't wanna be making someone get two hundred signatures all over again, I think that's, uh, unreasonable. Try our best to keep it modified.
All right, so let's, uh, try Dennis.
Uh, speaking from the planning board, it is our intention to request the continuance of that moratorium because we're not ready with, with that a bylaw, so that's our intent.
Would you guys support that?
For how long?
So we can get, if we don't extend it.
We have to pick a date to extend it, so we can't just.
I understand that, the only reason we're doing that is we were inclined to think that we would not have a bylaw ready and if you were going to extend the town meeting past the cutoff date for the existing moratorium, like Lika said, we would have no way of putting in laws for the town to have these people adhere to it. So if we extended or requested through a town vote for an extension of the moratorium, then we could get something in there. Not sure is it of the timeframe, but that's what made us nervous, is we wouldn't be able to get it done in time.
Even if you said July first, that would put town meeting.
The, the option to extend is kind of a nuclear option. I wouldn't discount it if we don't have something ready, but I'd like to think that, we, we're gonna meet tomorrow and talk about it, I'd like to think we can finish it off. You guys have a, a great deal going to start with, we just need to tweak it a little bit. I don't think we need to throw it away and rewrite everything. I'm hoping we can still get it done, um, before. But if, if we can't, yes, we'd have to, we'd be better, be better off to extend the moratorium, but only for something, uh, until annual town meeting. Uh, until annual town meeting, it wouldn't go past that. I don't wanna have another special meeting.
It wasn't that, just so I'm clear, it wasn't that we weren't going to be able to come up with something for the bylaw. To present at that town meeting, we wanted to cover our bases in the event the. Period went past the cutoff date, we didn't wanna lose that, that's the only reason we would ask for the extension. But if we can still get the town meeting before the mor- current moratorium expires, we may be able to come to terms before.
Well, especially since at the annual town meeting, we didn't know what the votes were gonna be on, on what was gonna be peris- permissible or not, and, and now, you know, it. Focuses on what we have to look at, we don't need to cover everything.
Right.
And cover all of our bases for if then, so there's, there's less to, less to cover, some of the sections can be thrown out, other ones, we just gotta tweak, I, I'd like to.
We'll know that tomorrow night.
Yes.
Well, the one thing is, is if we can't get this special town meeting in before the end of the year, it doesn't matter if the moratorium's on. The warrant or not, because the town won't be able to vote on it until the special town meeting, so. I do see where if for some reason something gets presented and it doesn't pass, there's a concern there. But at that point, and it's a little bit easier to special town meeting, I would suggest that everybody that shows up to that town meeting is willing to sit down. And work it through and amend it as necessary to get a law passed, in other words, don't consider it a short night. Let's get something in the books, because whatever goes before the, the town, a special town meeting. Whether it's December, January, February, whenever it happens. I don't think there's enough there left that we can't. In our, prior to getting to the meeting, the, the joint boards drafting something. Get to something that should at least start to get somebody to say, you know what, let's do this, we can make this, we can work with this. And that's what I think, but if for some reason there's a sticking point. I think it's something we probably could clear up on the floor and not have to wait for a whole nother meeting.
And that may be what happens.
But I hear ya. I would definitely continue to listen, we don't have what, we have to make that decision. Probably twenty-one days before the meeting, so that there's a full week to get things printed on the warrant and ready for signature, so that somebody can post them. So. If December fourth was still the date, we'd have to go three weeks back and say, that's the date we need to make sure we choose all of the warrant articles that we'll put on the warrant.
And if you can use the eleventh, then we'll push this back, but November twentieth, so it still gives us a month, a month and a half at that point, which is.
So it'd either be November twelfth or November nineteenth minimum.
That's right.
Based on the December fourth or eleventh town meeting that we would. But the nineteenth would be very bad, because it runs into the Thanksgiving day, week, which means we're really not giving. Our support office time to actually print prep, we're giving them Monday and Tuesday, in a sense. Well, not even that, cause Tuesday would be the day we would be doing it.
We'll find, we'll know a lot more after tomorrow night.
Okay. Well, we'll continue to consider it, it's gonna be a request to be on it, we still got time to make a decision on that. So that's the marijuana one, and we talked about the dates regarding marijuana, but was there anything else somebody wanted to bring up regarding special town meeting? Your concerns, your thoughts, any other articles you wanted to talk about?
We had the solar panel issue.
Right, so the, uh, the solar bylaw, trying to figure something out for R eighty year residential ground arrays, right, something to that level? Did you guys have anything specific on that, that you would like to speak to, or is it more, again, just the timing of the special meeting and things to that nature?
I have something, nothing to do with solar, we're putting, we've, we've been waiting to get the go-ahead, but we're putting our Taser replacement on the warrant. And they do expire December of this year, in other words, there's no other service, so. Going forward, if we were to get it on the warrant, would be, the, the date is crucial for us.
There's no doubt we wanna have it in December, it's a question of if we want, make sure we can for us. And if we, and, and if so, is there some sort of penalty when we do it? And that, as Matt said, that may be, if it's, if it means we're gonna be offered and have to borrow money to pay the obligations and we take a, a hit, that might be what we have to do. I don't think so, but we'll find out in the next week. And there's no doubt we all wanna have it December, is there?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think we all agree to that, it's just a matter of what we can do. Alright, next one's.
So we have a motion for December fourth, right?
Uh, actually just to table it.
Oh, you pulled it back, okay.
We'll just table it for now and revisit it hopefully next Tuesday after.
Next Tuesday.
DPW commission will have a board selection.
That one too, Charlie said, if, if we are allowed to modify it instead of rescind it, then maybe the, you know, the two hundred signatures that someone's already gained.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is still valid, rather than, um, having to start again.
So. Alright, thank you very much. Next one that actually hits about three different ones, we'll just start with the chief of police, we have a canine program, and then he's got two other. Agenda items that we can follow up with.
First, I wanna thank everybody that's here. There've been a lot of questions that have been asked in the street, you know, people coming up to me ever since I got here about how can I program? Some people wanna know what it costs, some people wanna know why we don't have one, and some people wanna know why we need one. So I'm gonna try and answer all of that in this presentation. If anyone has any questions at any time, please feel free to ask. So we'll start with, you know, what, what is a canine team and why do you want one? It is one officer to one dog. So we don't have a dog and share it between officers, the dog doesn't stay on for say two shifts and work between two officers, it's. The officer, the dog, that's a team, and um. It's exclusive. That dog will go home with that officer, live with that officer, part of the requirement, if we take, if the board of selectmen takes one of the grants. Is that we build a kennel at the home of the officer to facilitate the dog living with that officer. And if the canine goes through the, uh, its career and retires with that officer, it's customary that the town. Sells the dog to the officer for a dollar, and the dog lives with the handler after retirement. It does require one car, and that is something that we're gonna discuss further, he's gonna be specially outfitted, it can't be shared. The only time you could possibly share a car is if you have two handlers and two dogs, but. I've really never seen that done, so it would require us having, either adding a cruiser as we discussed, or. Uh, just taking one of our existing cruisers and, and making it solely for a dog, you can't. Share to use for anything else because of the type of caging system that goes in the car. And with the caging system, there are electronic features like hot pop devices. And a fan, bowls, things to protect the dog in the case of heat, the number one killer of police canines is heat. A dog will be in a car, the air conditioner will fail, the car will overheat, officer will come out. And they'll find that his dog has passed away, and I've, I've actually been in a situation where a dog almost died that way. And but for somebody walking by and noticing it and saying something, the dog would have, it's a very. Touchy area, so the car that we would get and the way that we would outfit it would have the latest. Uh, technology for dropping windows and opening the door, setting off an alarm if the interior of the car got too hot. The team has to train twice monthly, and that's one of the things that's a cost issue for departments. You have to have eight hours of training every month to maintain your patrol certification. You have to have eight hours a month to maintain your specialty certification, which for us would be narcotics. So why do we want one? We want an immediate and effective narcotics tool, we stop cars all the time, and the question is, how do we determine if there's drugs in them? Why is somebody bringing drugs to Berry? This dog, the way that the law works, if you've got a car stopped and you don't detain it for any longer than what is reasonable. The dog can walk around and, and do a search, and do a sniff, basically, and if it hits on the car, then that's it, you can search the car. That's a huge deterrent, and when you get a team like that out on the road, you can make a real dent in the drugs coming into town. We obviously want officer and civilian protection, we want an additional use of force option, something that keeps the officer safe. I have yet to hear of a canine losing a foot pursuit. Crowd control. If you go to a bar, and again, I've been there and seen this happen, officer pulls up, a lot of chaos in the parking lot, fights going on. Another guy pulls up with a dog and they hear the barking, and the walls separate, everyone's quiet, nobody wants to get bit. Evidence recovery, this is something we used very recently, um, when a, a canine came to our, our town, and it's something that dogs do. If anybody was here for the demonstration this summer, you saw, it's, it's something you can use, you can save an awful lot of time. I give you an example, a burglar is running through the woods and discarding stuff. They, you know, sometimes they do that to come back later, or a guy that's running away from you and they're tossing drugs. You can't mark all that territory, but you know where they ran, and later on you send the dog and you cast him in there, and they can find anything that's got the heat from a human touch. And our search capabilities, which is probably key to the town of Berry. What search capabilities will a dog bring? That's number one, you know, we, when we bring a dog to the school, we bring dogs to the school, you know, twelve dogs, nine dogs, fifteen dogs. Takes a lot of setup, if you have a dog on your staff and you have an SRO, you can bring that dog up there. Just whenever you want, search whatever area you want, it's a good deterrent, it's a great deterrent for kids to, uh. Again, you walk a dog through a hallway, if you turn off the, uh, the, the water, while the kids try to flush their, this is what I've seen in a city school. All of a sudden, everyone runs in the bathroom trying to flush their drugs, it's, it's great, and the dog I brought that day wasn't even a narcotics dog. Kids see a dog, if they've got something, they wanna get rid of it, if they see it too many times, they just know not to bring it. Missing children, they always say if you find one missing child with your dog, it's worth every dime you spend. This is becoming a bigger issue for us, and a dog is perfectly capable of performing that type of search. Again, in the same line, medical emergencies, people wandering off, at-large suspects. We just had this, and I'm sure everybody saw it on the news. And waiting for a dog to come when you have somebody at large, that is within a perimeter. It is uh very difficult to do, requires that the officer would just go ahead and go in and, that's more dangerous. And then searching motor vehicles, and I touched on that, but a dog searching motor vehicle for drug, motor vehicle for drugs is far more efficient than an officer. Now dogs, when you, nowadays, uh, dogs are social, police dogs are social, so you get that. When you need to have that, and otherwise you don't, there was a time when every police dog was unapproachable. Now, they're not designed to be animals like in a petting zoo, it's not that it's something you bring in and have all the kids pet, but. They're social now, and they're social by design, because nobody wants that crazed dog that will just reach out and bite anybody that walks by, however. When it's time, this is what you get. We want a rapid response deployment, we have, over the past three or four weeks, had many, many. Uh, situations where we've had to call the dog, uh, in a ban, stolen car, and the guy fled, burglaries, and we're waiting, and we're waiting, and we're waiting, and they're getting away. We also wanna be able to cover an area much bigger than what a, a, uh, an officer can cover and a dog can do that. It did, again, a, a dog shows up and people calm down, they, the, a dog has that effect on people who would otherwise wanna fight with us or other people. And prisoner processing, now that we have the cell and we're gonna use it. Uh, when we have cameras, which we're waiting on, but we have officers back there one-on-one with our prisoners, we have officers back there one-on-two with our prisoners. You lay a dog down, and sit there in the, in the room with the prisoners, and it changes the dynamic, if you have that type of a, of a hostile environment, the dog is very helpful. If you don't have another officer to come in, but you have the dog, that'll work. What else can it do for us? Well, we, we had the basketball game at the school last year, and everybody there was motivated. Because we told them that we were gonna be bringing a dog if we got permission, and we're gonna name it Panther, and that still stands, it's a perfect name for a dog. And it gives your officers an opportunity to go to schools, go to groups, um, interact, when I first got here, there's a big, uh. Push to have officers working more, be more visible, uh, more interaction. Uh, get out of your cars, talk to people, this is a great way, and it, it'll bring the officers out of their cars, and it'll bring us together at events. People tend to like canines, canine handlers give great demonstrations. So what, what are we facing right now that would cause me to be here doing this? If we average it out, we're going after, uh, we're asking for sixty deployments a year. Some months it's a lot more, occasionally it's less. We're having a, a big rise in burglaries, I believe that part of that rise is because we haven't caught the guy that's doing it. Not that everyone's done by the same guy, but if we had gotten one guy a while ago, we probably would've saved three more. Our average response time, even though the other agencies are more than willing to help us, is at least an hour. Sometimes we'll get a, a, a bloodhound more quickly, not always, and sometimes it's two hours for the dog. We had a situation a couple weeks ago where we had to call the dog out three times, first response time was thirty-five minutes, we had to call the dog back. To search an area we thought that the guy was in, hour and fifteen minutes, we had to sit, basically wait for the sun to come up. Then the person was actually found, fled from a house into the woods, we set up a perimeter, hour and a half to get another dog there. That's in one, that, if we'd had our own dog, it'd been over before it started. So we do not have an ability to rapidly deploy, we have to wait, the best intentions, the state police for example, they have a lot of dogs, but they're not. In New Braintree, they're at a headquarters for a canine response, and that's a long way out, and they may not have one even available for us. And we call neighboring agencies, they have one on, great, they help us if they can, they may not have one on, may not be available. More often than not, that's what we're hearing, we're hearing, I'm sorry, there isn't one, do you want, how far out do you want us to call? Two hours away, an hour and a half away, um, that's the more often than not, we, we do tend to get bloodhounds more quickly, but even that's not all the time. And we need to be able to, especially with the amount of burglars we've been having, and a certain situation that we keep facing where we're constantly searching for youths. We really need to be able to get a dog on the scene right away. we really need to be able to get a dog on the scene right away. Now, I'd like to, I thought this would be a bigger screen, but let's talk about how much this is going to cost. I don't know if everybody got one of these sheets. The bottom line is, it's going to cost sixty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars to bring a dog to Barry. That's the cost of the, of the dog, the training and all of the equipment, food, insurance that goes with it. From all of that, and one of the biggest pieces of that is we have to buy a car. We want to start a car with the dog so that we get the most use out of that car. Theoretically, the car could last the life of the dog, which is eight years roughly, but it might not. What we don't want to have to do is continually pay to re-out for the car. So the old days of giving the oldest car in your fleet to the canine handler are gone. Because that was when they used to cut a piece of wood and put it in the backseat and the dog, and put a little piece of carpet on top and that's what the dog lived on, but that's not it anymore. You're putting a seven thousand dollar cage into this car full of all of the heat sensors and door lock popping devices, it would be very expensive to have to re-out for the car over a few years. So buying a new car, putting it with the handler, making it a one-use car, that's, that's a lot of money. That's a, twenty-seven thousand for the car alone and then the normal outfitting costs. What can we do to offset that? I've already applied for the Vestadog grant. That's four thousand dollars that can be spent towards the purchase of the cage. So that offsets our sixty-three hundred dollar cage, right, four thousand dollars, that's good. I've applied for the Stanton Canine Grant and that's worth twenty-five thousand dollars to us. That'll pay for the dog and the equipment that goes with it and they have requirements which are listed in here, things like two years of food, three years of food, two years of vet coverage are required, putting a kennel at the handler's house, all of that's in there. Now, at the bottom of that, if you look, you'll see there's seven thousand dollars left over. My last conversation with Stanton, in my last conversation, they stated we might be able to use that seven thousand dollars towards the purchase of the car. It was not something that was allowed in the past, but now they're starting to see that maybe that would be okay. So, or I say we have to raise thirty-nine thousand dollars, maybe it's thirty-two. I'm hesitant to commit because they haven't said they guarantee that and you don't know if some of these equipment costs might be a little bit more. So basically, at the end of the day, we're looking at raising thirty-nine thousand dollars. Now that, is if we send the dog to training in-state. And there's a couple of different ways you can look at that, but if we send it to training out-of-state, then we have to have the whole sixty-six thousand. If we send it to training in-state, thirty-nine, but if the dog fails, we have to have the additional monies to pay because the grant doesn't take in unless your dog succeeds. And a certain percentage of dogs fail and I, that's one of the reasons for looking at out-of-state. So I'm comfortable saying we have to raise sixty-six thousand, seven hundred, but we could get away with thirty-nine thousand. Really just depends how our fundraising goes. Now, below that, you'll see there's a, there's a cost for the overtime that needs to be paid out when the officer goes to training. It really depends how you do it. The grant covers a thousand dollars a week, replacement costs for the officer for the fourteen weeks that you go to patrol school, if you go in-state. What does that mean? It means they don't give you nearly enough money to cover a one-on-one replacement. If that was the case, we'd need thirty-seven thousand, but they're offering us fourteen. However, it basically says we can replace two and a half out of every five shifts. The way that our overtime system works, we can probably do that because we don't replace every time an officer is gone for training or books officer. So that's a reasonable, it's reasonable for us to expect that we would only have to replace two and a half shifts a week to cover an officer who's gone for five shifts. They also cover four thousand dollars worth of replacement costs for the second phase of training, which is the narcotics training, which is six weeks. And again, I think it's reasonable to say that that four thousand dollars should cover the replacement costs. However, I think we'd actually come out ahead, we probably wouldn't use all of the grant money available for that. But the exposure, if we were doing it one-on-one, the grant doesn't cover it all, it covers about half of it. Continued costs, after speaking with other chiefs, and I've also been in charge of dog program before, it's reasonable to say that you're going to get two call-outs a month at four hours per call-out. Because you would have to figure your dog's going to be on a tactical shift, for us probably the evening shift, and most of the calls that would come when the dog, will come when the dog is working. We're not necessarily going to offer our dog to other towns when he's off-duty, only when he's on-duty. So that would be, how many times do we think that we might end up having to call him back out at four hours a call? So we're saying eight hours a month, which is about thirty-six hundred dollars annually. Additionally, a canine team, as I said earlier, they have to train twice a month, but we, with our contract and with whatever MOU we sign, we should be able to make that cost-neutral. We should be able to be able to switch the officer's shift onto send him to training without having to pay him overtime. So, that's a breakdown. Now, if you have any, if you have any questions, I know you probably have a lot of questions.
How about you start?
Well, I'm interested in the seven thousand on the Stanton grant. Your only thing that applied towards the cruiser, not the cruiser equipment?
Yes.
Might it be easy to apply to the equipment or no?
Yes, the cruiser or the cruiser equipment, yes.
Okay. I think we probably have a better shot at the cruiser equipment than the cruiser, but hope to see that comes up.
Possibly.
And this has always been, and I said from the beginning, my concern is that, you know, the thirty-nine or thirty-two thousand dollars, that's going to impact the town annually. And that's, we have to look at, you know, the funding I would think for that would be, if, if the marijuana licenses go out and the, the grow facility in town does produce and we have our agreed three percent in lieu of taxes, that would produce money that we could use towards something like this. And I think that's a great way to fund it. But we don't know exactly what that volume of money will be until we know what his production level will be and when it's going to occur. So the timing of that is still a concern for the funds. Without a lot of public input, which we haven't really had yet on it, we don't know how the town would feel about spending money on it. It's not, it's not my opinion I worry about in spending money on it, it's everyone else's. So the jury's still out on that till we, till we get more input, if the town's willing to move forward and spend thirty-two thousand or thirty-nine thousand towards a dog.
Well, and again, I'm looking for the opportunity to raise the rest of the money. My proposal is, allow us to go forward with raising the money and see if we can come up with all of this through donations.
And that's first year?
That's first year.
Right.
Well, if we get a donation stream, that is, sometimes a business will continue to put something out, a few hundred dollars a month, takes care on down the road of things like food and vet care. And I should mention, the vet, Hubbardston, we have a letter here from Dr. Marino of Hubbardston Veterinary Clinic. She will provide us with free services as long as we have insurance to cover the, those costs that insurance would normally cover. And she's also worked out things like the Heart Guard and those, as being something that would be donated for.
Still financial unknowns, which is the frustrating part. It's, on this end of it, and I'm sure the finance committee would agree, it's nice to be able to plug numbers in, real numbers and know where we're standing and we don't yet. And that's, that's part of what I don't like about it. I don't like the unknown, unless the town wants to step forward and support it. If it's proposed, at a meeting, which it could be. And if the town wanted to step forward and support it, then sure, we want to fund as much as we can through donations and voluntary contributions, but I'm more concerned about the town having what they want rather than us three putting what we want.
Right. Well, it was, again, it was not my intention to ask the town to fund it, it was my intention to ask the town, with all of this considered, to let us try to raise this money and see if we can.
How does a canine unit or team work in mutual aid situations?
Well, we would be, we're part of SEMLEC, so we have to commit, we as a, as a department use SEMLEC all the time. But my, our commit, our commitment to SEMLEC would be while he's on duty, while the handler's on duty. And it would be the rare thing, at the Boston bombing or something like that, that we would commit, you know, if he's off-duty. And an example, they just had the explosions over by Boston. When you're done with that, like right now, we sent one officer, we've just sent in the forms for reimbursement because there's federal money and state money for that. So for the big events that you would expect us to send a dog to, we would have to commit to that, a school shooting, a mass casualty event, but otherwise, it's while the dog's on duty.
Okay.
We'd commit to being able to help.
No different than responding with a cruiser if they call for backup or something.
Matt, I have a question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
What, what would hap- happen if the officer that was handling the dog leaves, leaves employment with the town?
Dogs are, dogs can be sent to a short period of retraining and be repurposed for with another officer. Depending on the training you start with, it's, if you go out-of-state, it's quick, that's how the dogs are designed, because the dogs are trained before they ever meet the handler. If you go in-state, it's a little bit more of a process, but it can be done in any case. Although generally, once a handler is paired with a dog, that's enough incentive for them never to leave their department. It's a, it's a bond.
Wouldn't necessarily hurt with some retention.
Yes, it would help us a great deal with retention. We have, by the way-
Just have to choose the right person.
We have, we've sat down, we've had a process, and after we selected the officer, we sent the officer down to Boston. Boston's one of the nationally renowned training centers, Boston PD. We sent our officer down there, which was a requirement of the grant, they vetted him and they came back and said this guy would be a fine choice, so that they would accept
So you already have somebody that-
Officer Matt Erosian. Can we take questions from anybody?
I think it's a great idea and I would like to know if the dog would have a vest, protective vest.
There are two different sources, the answer's yes. There are two different groups that I know of that donate the vests, so we would immediately get on, Vestadog, for example, is one of them. So yes, the dog would, now the dog will wear the vest in tactical situations, but the dog would have a vest.
Nika?
Two questions. One is, is there a requirement for the dog to live in, like within a radius of town or?
No, but we know that this officer lives close enough that it wouldn't be an issue.
And the other question I have for you is, what narcotics does current dog, like what are the current trainings for the dogs, what narcotics are they able to do?
All of them. So the problem is how we're going to handle marijuana going forward, but the dogs do the whole spectrum.
Dennis?
It's not a question, it's a statement. I recall several years ago on the fire department, two young boys in Barry were lost at West Ledges. You couldn't see the hand in front of your face, it was so foggy out, it got dark. The entire fire department was out there, police department, EMS, searching for these boys for hours. Canine came and ten minutes found those two kids. Ten minutes, boom, right to them.
Yeah, I think this would be a great tool and asset to the town of Barry. You know, we've got a great department, willing and able and putting together the pieces that need to make this happen and certainly, you know, with some effort and adding the community in and helping to figure out how to get fundraising. I know I did a little research, I talked to the chief in Rutland and, you know, his comment was, you know, the community just, just, you know, took over and said, this is one of the greatest things we've ever done. And they did it, they made it happen, the monies came, you know, from wherever and he's been very happy and also, you know, considers with the amount that we are calling in and asking for dogs that we can and need them. You know, some people may think we don't, but if you hear, you hear the story and you get the facts, the reality is, it's a good thing to be doing and it seems like a lot of money right now, but you spread it out over the years, the cruise is good and you spread it into what really is for a day, then it gets, you know, we can make it happen.
Thank you, Stephen Alves, Barry Health Center. Susan Begley, our manager and I are here to support this proposal. You know, we're in the midst of an opioid crisis in this country and this town has not been spared from that. And I think we all have a role to play, law enforcement has their role to play and this can be a tool to help with that and maybe help, you know, delay first use of drugs by some of our youth. It's, statistics are pretty clear that if you can delay use of substances to age twenty-five or later, as opposed to starting at thirteen or fourteen, your chances of becoming addicted to something go down from one in six to one in one hundred. So if this can help us to get there for just a few people, I think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry, did I just cut you off?
Nope.
I would defer to my elders. I went to the- Andy's got one year on me. I'm Steve Rohr, citizen of Barry and these are, these are difficult decisions that you have to make. I am so old that I remember in nineteen sixty, when we raised money for a Barry police cruiser, because we had no police cruiser, and when the seat was up, it was a cruiser, and when the seat was backed down, it was an ambulance. This is not the same world as I was a kid. This is not the same town as I was a kid and this is a new effort that we have, not only in Barry, but in Brookfield, or Sturbridge, or all of these areas as well. I'm also the president of the Barry Savings Charitable Foundation and I was sitting here taking some notes. We're going to have the chief into our group, there is nine members, towards the end of this month, to have this discussion. Granted that he gives your green light to at least go forth on the private sector, the nonprofit sector to try to be helpful. The Barry Savings Charitable Foundation, on my notes, for the active shooter program that we did up at Quavon Regional, we funded it seventeen thousand dollars. The HeartSafe Community, for making Barry a HeartSafe community, we did it four thousand dollars. The Barry Little League at thirty-five hundred dollars, Q Drug, seven thousand, five hundred dollars. I cannot speak for all nine of our members, but I think you know that the credibility that this chief and the department that he has brought to this community to go before our board seeking, I'm not sure what kind of resources that we would be providing or even if we would, but we certainly know the respect that we have in this. This is a new world that we are living in and up. After nine eleven, I was the chairman of the State Public Safety Committee and I've had a lot of experience over the years, not nearly as much as your chief has with canines, but I've seen the value that they have had, whether it's elderly people, missing children people. I was the senator with Bobby Martell, the chief of police in Paxton, in February fourth, nineteen ninety-four, if my memory serves me correctly, was murdered in the line of duty. And in those days, there were three hundred cruisers in Paxton and in Holden and they couldn't talk to each other. They did not have interoperability. We funded the technology. Now it's two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. And so it is a different world that we live in and if this canine corps can protect citizens, can protect police officers and save lives and do prevention, as Dr. Earl said, I don't go to selectmen's meetings very often, as you well know. I haven't, I helped carry that table in here some thirty-eight years ago, I want you to know that. I believe in what this program is and I hope that you're the chief executives of the town, as you well know, the legislative body of the town is the, is the town meeting. But your, your operation, your, as the leaders of the community, your support and the finance committee to understand that there are ways, there always are ways, where you can find resources in this regard. But you don't put a value on lives with monetary title, it's about quality of life and I certainly hope that you will give the green light to the chief and all of us to try to be helpful in this regard. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Steve's now a year older than he is and I forgot what I was going to ask. Everybody knows this Barry is a very rural community and I think this is a great idea. And I just got one question, how much does a dog cost and how old is he when you get him?
The dog's about seven thousand, five hundred dollars. There, it really depends. I'd like to get a dog that's about a year and a half old, that's the idea. And then it, it matters as to how trained they are. We'll probably get a green dog, depending on how much money we raise, but I would prefer a dog that's partially trained, so that might push it more to two years. So, but about a year and a half is about what we'll get.
Another thing I could just say, I don't, people have watched like, I don't know, Northwoods Bar and stuff like that and they have dogs all the time with them game on and stuff and they just do a footy off.
To be fair-
To be fair, part, part of the numbers the chief's put in, the twenty-seven thousand dollars for the cruiser, I asked him to put that in there and not try to work into one of our working cruisers. It could be a lower number, but I wanted him to make the number as, as high as it could possibly be. Because I, I don't think it's an unreasonable number. I mean, I know I've been hard on it and I've been making you show the numbers for it. But if that's the worst it's going to be at thirty-nine thousand dollars, that's not a, that's not a bad expense. Especially if we can get, get funding for it and get people to, to willing to contribute. But I do want to make note that the twenty-seven thousands in there, I asked him to put that in there. I wanted that dedicated to it. I didn't want it shifted into rotation, using it up early. I didn't want it, you know, take away, take a car auto service that dedicated to it, which was another option. I thought it should be an addition. So part of that number is, is by request. Um, just want to make, make sure that he was coming in lower, I asked him not to.
Is there, uh, something you'd like to say about how people could contact you if they privately wanted to donate to the K-9 program? Do we have a fund or something set up?
If we're given the green light to go ahead, then I've never set up a GoFundMe page, but I, there, that seems to be the way that departments do it. So it's something that would be through our website with instructions and a GoFundMe page. And then it should be fairly easy.
Okay. I was just curious, some people might like anonymous donations.
Oh, that's fine too.
And so who would they contact?
Well, once, if, again, if you give us the, that allows us to set up an account so that we can donate directly without, I'm guessing that that's very easily done.
Sending up a revolve account.
And to be clear, we said the, the continuing annual expenses are minimal compared to this. The cruiser expenses, once every eight years, if we replace a dog in cruiser, so. Any normal budgetary expenses should be low. I think, I don't remember the numbers you had up there, but there were four thousand dollars, it was five thousand dollars. So, so the maintenance on it, other than this initial, is, is, is not, um, very high.
What I have seen in the past is all of the equipment, people, I, I ran into a problem with people donating too much money for the food. And, and always, it's like they always want to get beds for the dog and, and things like that. But we had more equipment money than we could spend. And people just happen to really generally want to give to a dog program by leash, by harness, by bed.
And the, the GoFundMe pages, you can have, you can choose anonymous.
I've never worked with one before.
Some people just don't trust electronic things being anonymous. I'm just saying. You might not get someone to donate if they feel that's the only way to do it, that's all I meant. But thank you, I appreciate that, because, um, yeah, I'm an extreme. Everybody's tracking everything, so just believe that they, everybody knows everything. Go ahead, Dennis.
Um, as a lifelong member of the American Legion in town, I can't commit to it, but I'm going to bring up at our next meeting and ask the body to vote on us doing an annual fundraiser for them, maybe a dinner dance or a roast beef dinner to help fund that. So every bit of the profit would go to the K-9 program.
No, that would be nice. Um, anybody else have something? Yes, Sam?
Is there a component in this process where, uh, a neighboring town would need the dogs? Would they get the use of the, the officer and the dogs at a no-charge basis? Or would it be some reciprocation fund to towns that don't have this ability?
It's the mutual aid, right? Last night, we had more mutual aid in our town helping us than we could ever afford to pay, so it's mutual aid.
And it's only when he's on duty. So if he's off duty, we don't call and activate him and put him on overtime to do it. If he's on duty, he goes like any other officer would, somebody call for backup or assistance. Same thing as the fire department does or, you know.
And similarly, as you previously stated, that also depends on the level of the emergency. If the emergency's high enough, we may be calling them in, just like you're calling all hands on deck for any type of major emergency. So that's just standard police procedures. All right, what I would like to do then is see if we could have a motion to at least approve their efforts in trying to receive funding to make this program work.
I'd be pleased to make a motion that we give the chief permission, the green light, to go ahead and pursue his private funding, set up the necessary accounts and, uh, work towards establishing this, this K-9.
I'll second it.
Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We did all the discussion before. I know I kind of missed that little, any further discussion, but I'll get better at it. Thank you very much, chief. Now, we have two other agenda items for the chief while he's here. Um, one is memorandum of understanding for a school resource officer and the others are part-time police officer appointments. If I'm correct.
Right, the memorandum of understanding is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It, uh, simply allows us to, um, put the officer, there's a, you know, the school asks for two officers per basketball game and a certain number of officers for bas- uh, I mean, two for football, one for basketball, a certain number for graduation. This allows us to assign the SRO as one of them without physically jumping the seniority issue because we might feel that we need to have him there because of familiarity. And it also allows in the instance of the one-time graduation, if we assign him as extra because he doesn't get it, uh, he doesn't get it through a normal bid process and we say, we want you to go, that'd be the one time we would pay him the detail rate rather than the overtime rates who's making what everybody else is making there. So our concession is that one time, they ask for three and we decide we want the fourth, we're paying for it. Generally, he would get it by rotation anyway, but they're giving up one slot for every other dance game, which is worth, uh, it's very valuable to us to have the SRO. Somebody who knows the kids and knows what's going on at these events.
These details are paid for by the school or paid for by us?
So the only time we would pay is if they ask for three people for graduation.
We sent in four.
Otherwise, they pay for all, they pay for everything and that just allows us to insert the SRO into there.
Specifically, we give them a detail rather than overtime and that, so we, we acknowledge we give them a four-hour detail pay as opposed to overtime pay.
Yes.
So we'd be fifty-two or fifty-four instead of thirty-seven.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. For four, so it's an extra forty-four bucks.
To be able to.
To assign him for, for the detail. That makes more sense. I didn't like how I read it, it sounded horrible.
I, I don't. That's a big concession around there for to get him there.
I was going to say, a lot of this, at least when I read the MOU, wherever I read it, it was in here somewhere, I read it.
He handed them all to us, we looked at him to review it.
Right, so there's that one that just needs to be signed and.
Um, anyway, the one thing I was trying to figure out is it pretty much states the first three people on the list get to choose if they want it or not, no matter what the event is.
No, that's just for the graduation.
All right, I gotta read that MOU again, all right. If there is a school function or event, except as provided below, and a school requests police personnel, the first three selected will be from the normal bid list. If the SRO is not reached on the normal bid list after the first three, then you would be assigned, you would assign him, or may assign him.
So below, we talked about.
Which would be just regular overtime for that assignment unless it's graduation.
Yeah, I'm not going to add, the only thing that we're talking about at this point is graduation. And he probably will get it by bid and I may not even want him at that. What I really want, there's nothing that says I have to. What I really want is I want him at the football games, at a, a basketball game, if, if there's a need.
And the only thing I'm trying to figure out here is in the event we ever get to a point where you assign the SRO in addition to the requested number of details from, whether it's school or something on school property and it's a private function, I don't know. Is if you do assign him and then the town is now responsible for paying that detail, then that cost is part of your already budgeted salary system and overtime or however you would assign that.
Right, but.
So you would have to manage it like all your other overtime?
I would have to manage, the likelihood of my doing it, first, there aren't that many events. There's just the dances, the games and graduation. Generally, he gets it by, you know, by bid. Um, I, this is, you know, I would, I'm not, I'm not likely, if all of a sudden they come up with a new event, I'm not likely to just simply throw him in there to throw him there. I see the value of games, most of all. It's, it's that's, the games are worse, they might tell us there's a problem room and I want to have the guy there that knows all the players.
Okay. Any thoughts?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
I'm in favor.
Any further discussion, any parties? All right, let's call for vote.
I want a motion.
Well, yeah, because it's only one signature for the board, so I'm guessing that would be me, but I don't want to do that unless I speak to, get a vote.
Well, yeah, if you need a motion, it's a motion to approve the memorandum.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second it.
All right, call for vote?
Aye.
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 Thank you. The last thing is you have the, uh, the hire, the authorization to hire. They're, I need them to be conditional upon their passing of the last two phases, but we, we want to go forward with hiring them. So they've been interviewed, but before I can go ahead and put them through a psychological and, so it's a psychological and a social media review. I can't do that unless there's a conditional offer on the, on the floor. I can't give them a conditional offer without your permission. So I need permission, so that's why you see the dates. It's conditional that we'll start them on those dates, subject to them having successfully completed the, uh, one of them doesn't have to do the psychological because he's a corrections officer and has one in his personnel jacket. The other two have to do the other, you know, both phases. So November first for Trevor Allen, November first for Samuel Rivera. Um, October, I believe it's twelfth for Bobby Ruckus because he's finishing the academy and that'll give us enough time to review his, uh, social media before he finishes the academy, that he paid for.
These are auxiliary?
These are for part-time, yes, part-time.
What's the difference between auxiliary and part-time?
It's just how, it's however the town wants to define it.
I thought there was a legal, legal definition between the two as well as far as our responsibility.
There are legal definitions, but if we break it down, it's really, it's wor- it's, it comes down to the same thing. We use part-time, we can call them reserve officers if we want to. We're giving them full patrol capabilities, so we're giving them the most that you would give versus, and I, I can't say exactly which one, but one doesn't allow them to go on patrol and arrest. But there's reserve, part-time, auxiliary, and I think there's even another category. But we're asking, obviously, we want to fill shifts. We want to, you know, cut down overtime costs. This brings us within one of the fifteen max that we have, you know, six part-time max, um, and this will be helpful.
So this will put five.
So we'll have five.
At the end of the phone that you're hoping can help fill your shifts, et cetera.
Right, and if you remember, they have to provide their own uniforms, um, which they, you know, we interview them, they sign the document that were, our expense in this is a couple of training shifts and then we move forward.
I assume we still assign weapons, cops, taser, firearm?
Weapons, correct.
They have to have their own cuffs, you buy cuffs?
Nope, they have to have their own cuffs. What we've told them is we'll loan them stuff if we have it until they can purchase it, but it's, they're obligated to purchase. And one of them's already ordered his uniforms. It's an investment so that, you know, there's a incentive to stay.
Okay.
And, uh, no real loss to us if they do. Although these are very fine candidates, I would say, I'm pleased with them.
What, uh, anybody else have any other discussion on this?
Nope.
We know we needed more to cut back the overtimes.
I, uh.
That budget control.
I'll take my turn. I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to appoint Bob Ruckus, Samuel Rivera and Trevor Allen, um, to part-time patrolmen, assuming they pass the.
The conditional based on, conditional, conditional offer based on.
Conditional offer. We offer, we give them a conditional offer.
Subject to.
The, is that just continued background checks?
Uh, successful completion of the background process, yeah.
Okay, conditional to the successful completion of the background process.
We're getting out of touch with those.
See, that's why I needed to do this again. I, I was there and then I was like, I got all, I'm going to start all over. I'm going to make a motion to give a conditional authorization to offer part-time patrolmen positions to Bob Ruckus, Samuel Rivera and Trevor Allen, based on the proper completion of the background check process.
One second.
Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Department head, person of the select board chair. We'll hold on to those though until they actually pass the background before signatures.
Okay. Were you holding those?
Yes.
And that's the signed one, Andy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for taking the time to come out and set, do their presentation, it makes a difference.
Thank you.
That was a late night last night.
It was, early morning.
Early morning. I got a couple hours sleep.
And tell the whole world, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary committee, we need people that, well, as many people that showed up to support your K-9 program would fill out that committee nice. Speaking of which, two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary committee, we have a charge drafted by the town administrator, I believe, presented to us for review. I have reviewed it and I'm comfortable with it. I don't know if anybody else has any comments?
I read it and I was comfortable.
I believe I commented back already.
Okay. So if we do or don't have any questions, I guess we could either go to a motion or?
Yeah, I think we just put it to motion.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve this, uh, two-hundred anniversary committee charge as written.
I'll second it.
All right, and in my little, is there further discussion? I'll just state that it's, uh, we're looking for nine members on the committee. Time is counting. We only have, uh, five years left or so, five and a half maybe if we're lucky, if I did my math right. So most of the big things usually have to be scheduled probably in the next three years. Nobody will be available if there's big things we want to do. If we're not looking for big things, if we're looking for a whole bunch of little things, that's fine too, but we need a committee to help us. So please, please help us. Call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Committee approved.
Thank you very much, Andrew, that was appreciated, put together well. And, okay, safety committee, treasurer clerk. Let's talk about the tax collector treasurer candidate review process.
So we closed the application period last Wednesday for, um, tax collector treasurer. We got a couple of good applicants, I think. I just wanted to kind of run through you guys how you want to set up the process for review at this point. What I'm proposing is basically, uh, a new committee comprised of, uh, our finance team, so the tax collector, oh, sorry, uh, town clerk, accountant, the assessor and myself, um, to basically screen the applicants and bring a final candidate to you guys. So I don't know if that process worked for you or if you wanted to see something different.
How many candidates?
Uh, I got about ten total candidates for consideration.
Being this is really a department head type of thing, I'd rather see us see the final three and make our choice. With your recommendations, of course, you guys can rank them, but I would like, it's the only time I say, when it's, when it's department heads, I'd like that to come up with a board.
Okay.
My opinion, that's not a rule.
Generally, I'm in agreement with Greg there. I do like you guys going through.
Question.
But then bringing it down.
Steve has a question.
Go ahead, Steve.
Did they ever get the cameras in the police department so when you walk in, you get all somebody?
I don't think we've cleaned up the, if you walk in and there's nobody sitting at the reception window, how you get in without calling dispatch.
If you walk in the front door, there's a phone there.
Well, no, sometimes it wouldn't lock, sometimes it was locked.
The, the main vest.
He's saying you can't even get into the mudroom per se, vestibule, am I correct, is that what he's saying, you couldn't do?
A couple of times I couldn't get in at all, so I had to wait for somebody and then somebody come up there and it's alright. But if it's an emergency, there should be some way to get a hold of somebody, right from the outside. And she said that he, if somebody's in the back room, they don't know there's anybody out there.
The, uh.
There should be. It was kind of important, that's where the police station's for.
Well, the intent was that that main door was not to be locked, but the interior door was to be, the one that was to be locked.
Yeah, I know, but if there's something, emergency, there should be, if somebody's in the back, you can't get, they don't know you're there, that's what they don't mean.
We need a simple door buzzer.
A buzzer or something.
We don't say doorbell, but buzzer, a good obnoxious buzzer.
At least they have a camera out here and you can buzz it and somebody's there and they'll answer you. Somebody said dial nine-one-one, we do like dial nine-one-one for something that's not bad, if you want to board, but not like the death.
A buzzer will get their attention.
And dialing nine-one-one only works if you're actually carrying a phone.
Right.
I mean, if you're at the door and you actually need help, you have no phone, that's worst case scenario.
You know, it's like bothering police for nothing, it's just if you have to talk to somebody, it'd be nice to have somebody that, if they're in the back, they wanna know you're there.
Yeah.
Well, we do have them on duty twenty-four hours a day, and you can reach them by phone call. That way, if they're on patrol into, they can get sent back by dispatch, and I always advise, try that first.
Well, they told me that somebody's in the back, if they don't know anybody's out there, in the back.
Right.
Right, what I think Greg is saying is, in that event, if you're able to pick up the non-emergency number for dispatch. And they'll notify the people in the building that there's somebody at the front door looking to get in.
I did call once and they says, well, everybody's out, you know, they're running to something.
Well, and they could be too, it's, it's not like we have, um.
I got you.
You know, a secretary is on the staffing at the station twenty-four hours a day, we do have officers on, but they, they do patrol. So they're in and out of the station, so there may not be anyone there, period. So. Um, you know, during the daytime, I was, yeah, there is, but evenings, weekends, you know. You really have to count on making a phone call because.
Yeah.
This, you, you know, there's a good chance if they're here, we'd rather see them on patrol than sitting in the station.
Oh, no, I know that, but I'm just saying, if they're there, they should be able to get somebody to do something.
Right, but it's still a kind of, I'm not trying to discount it, but we're, we're sort of talking about maybe a twenty percent chance that they are there versus, so. So in that one in five chance of there, we need to be able to ring a doorbell. You know, the bigger picture is that more often than not, they're gonna be out and about, if, if they're on duty, they're not gonna be sitting in the station. We don't want them sitting there watching the sports games.
I'm just saying, somebody's, if they're in the back, they told me that, they don't know when he goes out the front.
I think a doorbell might, simple enough.
They should have something there.
Yes, Claire.
Isn't there an intercom? Most doors like that.
There's no, there's no intercom on the outside door. So if the outside door is locked, you have no way to communicate in the building, but once you get in that vestibule.
And the second door is locked, is there a phone there?
Yes.
But it doesn't necessarily.
Locking the front door.
I, yes.
That's right.
So that's easy solution.
That's what the intent was, that that door was the only door to be locked, the exterior door was not to be locked, so that way, if nobody was there, somebody could walk in, pick up the phone. And the phone would immediately ring over to dispatch, and dispatch would dispatch an officer back to the public safety building to address the person.
This would've been a great, great before the chief left.
So they should leave that door open, somebody's gotta be reminded.
Andrew can relay the message just as well.
Would've been quicker and easier to do it, because everyone's here.
And it's possible, if everybody's on patrol, he doesn't want that outside door open. Because he doesn't want someone walking in and doing something in the foyer when they should.
And maybe that's it, maybe they're locking the outside door when there is nobody in station and keep it unlocked when there is somebody in it, and that could be the case, so if it's locked, there's nobody there. And if it's unlocked, then there is somebody inside, it could be that's what the case is.
Right.
But I mean, if there was an officer in the building, they might have the front door unlocked, and when they leave and the building's empty, that might be when they lock it. I don't, I don't know, but that would seem to make sense.
They should have a buzzer, like over here, you stand a buzzer, you can speak to somebody at the door.
Yep.
We should look into that and also look into.
Possibly wireless too.
If there's any way that. How that might be able to pipe into the senior officer on shift. It's not that hard to take a buzzer and then.
Oh, if the wiring's there, it's even easier. Send me an extra pair.
There's means and methods, we could figure out some things, we just gotta think it through and figure out what we can spend. Yeah, no, I don't disagree, and like I said, it's, to me, it's more about the person running up to the building, looking for help because they need it. And obviously, they're doing that because they don't have this.
Yeah.
And now they're stuck at the front door, and who knows what's happening while they're waiting for someone to find them at the front door. And it would be. Just the worst story, to find out someone was just in the back of the building and didn't know somebody really needed help at the front of the building, like. So this is where filling in this avoids that potential.
They have a buzzer there, you push it, there's somebody there, you're all set, there's nobody there, then you leave.
Could you pencil that on your agenda earlier rather than later, so we don't forget to, uh, address it again as we did this time?
Feel free to just tell the chief, we want an answer on how he proposes to resolve that concern. Thank you.
We mentioned that before, but.
Yep, and it, yeah.
It's kind of important, not just for me.
We, we unfortunately, we passed probably fifteen things extra night on to Andrew, and he's got, um, if you, if you know the stuff that he does, he does, he does a lot, he's got a pretty full plate. Every other committee that goes through, he's, you know, got his hands in the committee, he's dealing with the state.
Was that the chief?
No, no, this guy here, so last time we said he'll, he'll look into it, but it's this, you know. But that's our only avenue, because we're not actually here to do it, but it's, you know, it's, it's not meant, it's, we didn't mean to put it off, we just didn't have a focus on it, given the other things.
The way things are going now, like right now, I get a call when special home kids escape, I get a call. It's better, before I was, I, I wasn't on a list, I didn't know, I never, he said he put a red alert, but he never went to bury it.
Yeah, there was a little of the transition of understanding how to register too, that confused a lot of people.
So then I, aware of it, I called some of my neighbors up to watch out, so I was good. It's a good idea. It is.
Alright.
Okay, that's the main thing.
Appreciate it very much, I'm sorry to hold you up.
You had a picture of something down south buried it for a while, did you get a picture?
Hmm, I did get a picture.
Yeah.
Working on it, definitely working on it, through actual several avenues, just so you know where.
Okay.
But, thank you very much.
That's what I'm saying, they're not paying taxes. Okay, that's it, thank you very much.
You got it, thank you.
I always appreciate the input.
Alright, so, your crew will go through preliminary review, get us three, we'll set up. First night interview like we've done before, that process.
Alright, um, you wanna.
You can schedule the interview for us, and do email.
I'm thinking. Should be able to get it down for your next meeting. Possibly.
You mean, like tomorrow night?
No, no, no.
Next Tuesday night?
The next.
The fifteenth, the fifteenth.
Yeah, because I mean, next is last week's the eighteenth, so I'd rather be able to get somebody in place.
Do you wanna do a special meeting for that, or do, I mean, depends how, what's our agenda gonna look like at that meeting, I'm guessing full. Because we're gonna be dealing with, um, the bylaws.
Yeah, that's right.
Might pull a special day for that.
How about?
Yeah, I'd say, then we've got so much going on and then.
That's gotta be, you know, if we set aside forty-five minutes apiece, it's still a couple, two, three hour interview process.
October twenty-second.
When?
October twenty-second.
So three weeks?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Do you wanna do it sooner, or do you wanna?
How much time do you think you're gonna need yourself to get through that list and?
I'm just thinking. If I go, if I can meet with everybody this week, pick out, say, five, do all our interviews. Between the eighth and the twelfth. Or between the eighth and the eleventh. Have a final cut down by the fifteenth.
Doesn't need to be Monday, I mean, in my opinion, I don't know what you guys.
No, it doesn't, but I'm trying to remember what else we have going on that week. And not necessarily just as a board, but I know like.
Q E M P.
Q E M P had some dates going, the eighteenth actually was a date that the schools, this is something we gotta add to the list, I'm sorry, we got correspondence, but we'll work on that.
Eighteenth and, was it the fourth?
Yeah, the eighteenth and the fourth of the first, right.
Put it in my phone.
And then the finance committee, was he eighteen too?
Right.
I mean, Wednesday night. Would be a off night for us right now, right? Wednesday nights?
Yeah, because it's usually the finance committee, I avoid Wednesdays because that's when they would normally be meeting, so.
Right, if they're gonna be on, if they're gonna be on a Monday, Sunday?
I think I could do the seventeenth. If, if it works out, you guys, you're ready and you can line up interviewees. Then I'd be willing to give Wednesday, is Wednesday's work for you, or is that still a late day, hard for you to make it back to town for something?
Nah, I'm, should be okay, we've got that economic development meeting that night.
That is that, I knew, I was like, my brain was.
What? What time is that?
That is at six.
So that, that, that would be not doable, that, we need a couple hours for this.
Yeah, we're gonna need.
Um.
Alright, that was a.
I wouldn't be so silly to recommend a Friday, but. Or a Thursday. It doesn't matter to me, it's, it's up the street and I could do any of those, I'd rather not do a Friday, I don't think anybody wants to do a Friday.
At that point, I think I agree with Andrew, I might as well plan on the twenty-second, or that Monday, if that's the twenty-second.
Sixteen doesn't work for me either.
Is this offering, we could do it earlier if we can, but it's not always gonna work.
But I do, I also understand, um. Not trying to lose too much time between one treasurer's end date and a new treasurer starting.
Yeah, I already had a conversation with the D O R, we're concerned, so. I wanna make sure that we were, we actually had a plan for filling it, because I think a lot of towns are in that position where it's. You know, they lose one and then they have a hard time backfilling and also.
Do we wanna consider a, a, a two week or a month continuance for it, to see if we can get her to agree? Take the pressure off this and give some overlap time, rather than, I, I understand she's obviously come in and do it, but I'd rather make it, get a contractual if we could, to make sure we have this covered. I mean, that's what we do with the, um, with the I T, last year, roll that in for a couple of months, to give ourselves time to be properly prepared.
We could do it that way.
It, it doesn't have to be a whole month, even a couple of weeks, just to make sure we have an overlap, because if, if we come up with the approval on the twenty.
Think she's more interested in giving like maybe a day a week for a series of weeks. More to try to pass on institutional knowledge and that, you never kinda get that in one day, or maybe even in one week. If you, you know, if you take five days over five weeks, everybody has time to gather and then go, hey, I got more questions. But if you do five days in a row, it's like boom, bang, gone, and then it's like, oh, I got a whole bunch of questions, where'd you go?
All the more reason, if it's gonna drag out over coming in a day over multiple weeks, some sort of consideration or compensation, they have to commit extra for those, for those days.
Yeah.
That's all, I don't want, no one should do us something for nothing, we're not looking for that.
This would be an opportune thing, Andrew, if you don't mind working with the finance committee to see if they put it on their agenda for use of the reserve fund. To help assist paying for summer for extra days, if they're interested in listening to that. But if I'm correct, it's. That falls under their approval, or it's not joint approval, right, it's just finance committee that has to approve that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Once it's been approved, the town meeting has that type of fund, it's just you have to approve.
Yeah.
And that, that'd be a smart thing for it, to, to get her to come in.
Supposed to be emergency.
Well.
Oh, was that?
If we have.
Okay. This is a financial emergency.
If D O R's concerned.
We're gonna lose a treasurer. But I got you, I just figured, you guys can debate it, I just, if you could ask on their agenda, that would be appreciated. We'll see if it'll help.
I just wanna make sure we offer a compensation, to say she'll come in on her own is very generous, but. We should be paying her to come in and, 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 you know, allowing however many visits they might need to do it.
Let me talk, let me talk about the timeline with her, see if she's, you know, open to a transitional agreement. And, uh, you know, we'll see how the negotiations go, by the final scope, maybe. Maybe the salary become, comes under what our, our.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, maybe someone for a salary.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to start a new treasurer at the same salary she's been making.
Alright. Alright, well, thank you very much. Then we'll hope the, October twenty-second.
Do we have minutes to approve?
Uh, I haven't have a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting, so I just wanna make sure.
Excellent. Safety committee.
Um, and yeah, I just had to know my. Yeah.
In the election warrant. For the, uh, state and federal positions and all that stuff, that.
Minor detail.
It's more to say, yeah, it's there, do we agree, vote, sign, et cetera. So, safety committee. Now, my first thoughts on it was. I generally like how you wrote up it as a charge, but I think it should just be changed from a charge to a policy. Being employees of the town, I don't think they need to be kind of. The charge almost seems like it's a volunteer to be on it. And we're really identifying certain department heads that should be part of it, and they should have a role in developing the safety plan. So there's a little bit more, but it should just be part of the policy, I think.
Yeah, and I was trying to, one thing that was kinda brought to my attention now, kinda working through it, is the fact that. The D P W actually has provision in their union contract that there shall be a safety committee between the D P W and the town. And right now, that's, that's absent, and it being a contractual obligation, I think it's something we really need to look at as far as, as. You know, meeting that, and then how, whether or not this is safety committee, if that's, if that's separate or if that's integrated, so. Um, it's just something I'm working through right now, I have, I gotta meet this week. With the representative of the union to discuss kind of how we can make that, make that happen.
And if we tried to say it was our policy that these certain department heads be part of that committee, but that's, I'd rather talk to them and get them to.
Yeah.
Volunteer to be part of the committee, than try to set a policy.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to suggest more is we should work on turning that into a policy, but we do gotta get the right buy-in from the people that we're looking to have participate, so.
If the language is there in the union contract now, we're kinda.
Yeah, the.
Kinda obligated.
Agreed.
It might be stolen some.
For now.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a little bit of discussion I wanna have with it, um, with them, just because, uh, it doesn't. The way it's worded in the current contract, there might be, need to be some revisions, just because it doesn't flow correctly, if you really think through the process. So, I, so I'd rather wanna talk to the, the union rep, see if, uh, see if there's something we can work out before we can really go fully steam it on.
You've talked to department heads about this, hasn't?
I've sent it, sent this.
You want involved?
Um, I've sent it primarily to the union, just to get their, um, get their. Information back on it, I haven't had a chance to discuss it directly with the department yet.
Give them a little heads up.
Yep.
That's all.
Yep.
No one likes to be blindsided.
Yep.
I learned that a few months ago with a transfer station issue, so, uh, we'll try to give heads up wherever we can. It's never my intention to blindside anybody, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, I guess, um, we can get some more steps to that level.
But we agree we need to do it, we need to follow a contractual obligation, we have to move forward with it.
In it, in the best interest of the town, as time moves forward, these things can end up becoming, uh. Unsuspected major liabilities we have to deal with because we didn't have a plan in place.
And they could help our liability insurance and things in the future too, to have programs to, then set up procedures.
Yeah, the fuzz, you know, this, these guys would be the ones to kind of push, push for the train, to recognize things, to say, hey, that's something that we could use, let's, let's bring it back to our department, let's. Train them on it, rather than it all just coming from the top and saying, here, you have to teach your guys this.
Right.
And they know better what they need work on as well.
Yeah.
But as you work out this policy of about. Right now, we're calling a safety committee, but you can call whatever you want through the policy development. But just be sure to come back to the board with your draft of what you believe the policy should be. And then we can comment on that draft if we think we're missing this or that, or. Appreciate it. I guess our closest, uh, deadline for that would, is it February twenty nineteen that it actually goes in, or is it just the beginning of calendar year two thousand nineteen?
Oh, the motion regulations?
Yeah, when the state.
Yeah.
Said, okay, we are now under those rules, ma, but run by the state.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's Fe, yeah, February, I have it thinking, it's February ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Alright, so we should probably sometime in January at least have a draft ready so we can kinda.
Yeah.
Have a little back and forth if we think this is anything.
The rest of the business world has been under these regulations for years and years and years, so. Been under these regulations for years and years and years, so it's, it's not.
Oh, yeah, it's just because we're writing a policy, we just wanna make sure we don't overkill her. Or completely miss certain things that maybe we think should be involved.
Yeah, they wanna see like plans in place, um, addressing certain policy, like other policies, um. Before that deadline, so hoping to get this kind of established and, um. Moving forward before, before the OSHA regulations kick in.
Gotcha.
That would be wise.
Um, election warrant, November, I will, let's see, let's see how it goes. Alright. We have several copies of the election warrant to the constables of the city, town of Berry. Let me, uh, start from the top. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, warrant for the state election. Worcester S S. To the constables of the city, town of Berry. Greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Berry who are qualified to vote in the state election to vote at. Precinct one is the senior center, five five seven South Berry Road, South Berry. Or precinct two, the American Legion Post two, formerly called Post four oh four, four fifty South Berry Road, South Berry. On Tuesday, the sixth day of December two thousand eighteen, from seven A M. to eight P M. for the following purposes. And it's to cast their votes in the state election for the candidates for the following offices and questions. Senator in Congress, Governor and Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer and Receiver General. Auditor, Representative in Congress, Counselor, Senate and General Court. Senator and General Court, Representative and General Court, District Attorney, Clerk of Works, Register of Deeds. There are also. Three valid questions. These will be posted in their. Places throughout town, they're generally posted. I just wanted to give you a quick summary of what's on it. And we need to sign it. Next real item on the agenda, I think beyond that, unless you have more to discuss on the warrant.
December six, you said?
No. November two thousand eighteen, the sixth day of November.
I thought you read December. That's awesome. Sixth day of November.
I'm glad you clarified it, cause maybe I did. And then I'll have to go back on the camera and say.
It's always in November, so.
Wow, what's on my brain?
We could hold the whole state up.
That's what I get for reading. Cause now I just confused the entire town. I should've just been quiet and said, let's sign that later. I'm sorry, gentlemen.
If you meet the clerk reading, that's okay.
I could've done that. Alright, so I am going to. Correspondence we received. Alright, suburban regional school district school committee sent a letter out to the various boards of selectmen regarding. Their recent vote by the school committee to agree to start the process of closing the new Braintree. Elementary school. That process after the school committee votes on it requires. All member towns board of selectmen's to meet, discuss and vote. And then there's another step in the process after that, that includes all of us in a public hearing. Um. I'll admit, I don't know all the details of the different chapters they reference in the agreement between the towns. But it's generally a few more steps in the process before an official closure of an elementary school can occur. Um, these were s- the first date they are asking is for us to meet on Thursday, October eighteenth. Two thousand eighteen at six thirty at the Educational Support Center. Per the regional agreement, it is essential that a quorum of each of the member towns' boards of selectmen is present at this meeting. We have come to realize we do have a conflict because we also have a finance committee meeting that night, although it's not our board. It's early in the season. It's a good time for us to understand the general direction they're looking to go and how they wanna kinda look at the budgets and prepare and ask for budget info. So I do think. I see a conflict a little bit of where would we rather be? I don't know what your general opinions are, whether we should respond saying we can or can't make this or see if. Um. We can reach out to them to see if they could alter it, but.
I think because they're trying to get five boards together, um, if we can make their timeline for that, that's probably. Reason to do it. And I'd have questions. I'm wondering why they chose that school. I thought that was one of the newest schools. One of the better conditioned schools, so I, I thought that was a strange one to choose to close.
I think them and Okham are very similar and they're kinda thinking they could fit them both.
Doesn't have the space to hold all of Okham in the Braintree.
So the size of the facility as well.
Okay.
These are questions I'd ask anyways when we're at that meeting, but obviously we've talked about having to close a school because of the attendance anyways. Um, and it's gonna have to be done sooner or later.
I hear you. And one of the points I'll bring up there is I always have the concern that when you start making decisions that are consolidating, reducing and. You've created a momentum that will never turn around. So if you. Are in New Braintree and then you tell the world that you just closed an elementary school. How are you gonna convince families to move in and have children to raise? You, you won't. And you, it'll take you decades to get an elementary school back. So I could understand why if I was living in New Braintree, there's no way in the world I'd wanna hear this. Even if I know right now it's a tough time and it costs more to do it. Sometimes you gotta spend more now so that you don't lose your future. And sometimes I think we get ca- lost in this. Saving money today and totally forget what it's gonna do to a town. In the next five or ten years. And I got a feeling that that's something I would. But. New Braintree Selectmen will be there, other boards will be there. We can get more info then. It's just. One of the things that I definitely will wanna talk about there.
This is part of a larger discussion we need to have with the school committee. Um, i- if you look at our, our standings education wise in the state over the years, we have, we have fallen down from where we were a decade ago. Um, and realistically, as you say, you, you, your home values are tied to your school system. If people don't wanna bring their kids to school here, then they're not gonna buy homes here. And then the home values are slipping. And then people wind up upside down in their mortgages. And, you know. Vice versa, if, if, you know, if we can't get the school education ranking our standings higher and work on that. We're not gonna get our home values up. We're not gonna be able to bring new people and we're not gonna be able to, you know, have, have houses turn over in town. So this is, it's not just about the money right now. It's also about, you know. If it does, like you said, if it, if it, if it harms the values of homes in New Braintree, it stops people from moving to the area. It's gonna further reduce our school population. And this is gonna snowball. Um, you know, we need to have a more in-depth discussion, maybe while we're all together, all five towns, about the direction of our school system. And about the direction of the education and, and. You know, I don't know what their focus is on now other than. M C A S is testing the students, but our education needs to rise in the level of the state. We need to get a higher ranking, a higher standing. And that will help turn things around economically, um, you know, as far as home turnovers and. If your home values drop because if you aren't attending school and people don't wanna move here, so you can't sell your house. And your value comes down. You know, if you bought it at three hundred and you can sell it for two eighty, no one has twenty thousand to throw at to get rid of the house. And, and that's gonna get worse and worse. We need to open a discussion with them and, and hopefully, you know, the towns that think about it too. I think we need to talk about the direction of the, of the school and the education itself, cause I think we need some sort of overhaul to, to drastically change. Where the school's headed. It has not been heading in the right direction for, for years. Unfortunately.
Gotcha.
But it all ties together. It's not, it's like you say. It's not as simple as closing the school budgetary wise. It, it does make sense, but I think you're right. You're onto something with the, with the values and.
It's, and it's not an easy decision for anybody, but it's, I think it's. A lot harder to put a dollar value on what you're gonna lose. It's harder to actually prove that financial loss in the years to come. But in ten years, you'll look back and you'll be able to easily account for it. And, you know? Let's put it this way. Nobody's talking about overcrowding in New Braintree. But it's a common issue across everywhere else. And the more you keep pushing everybody into one building, you're gonna come right back to overcrowding. So that's another part. I'm just saying it, it, it starts to add up. I would love to have an overcrowding issue all over everywhere, but it's not necessarily the thing. And I don't know enough about how they do the transportation in New Braintree for the elementary school. But I'm sure you're now adding an additional transportation to get them to Okham that you may not have needed before, that now. The regional school system is paying for.
The bus, the Okham children, all grades K through six, are brought to the Okham special school. The New Braintree bus, they go to Okham. They, the bus makes a trip. And then the kids from Okham that go to New Braintree hop on that bus, the kindergarten, it's where they're brought back to New Braintree source.
Okay. So right now, they're generally using like one bus to do whatever they do anyway, back and forth, kinda.
One bus that shows.
Okay. So it may or may not make a difference on the transport if they just kept everybody at one place versus back and forth, but it sounds like either way, they're. In both towns.
Well, and the other issue is when this, if this school is closed and not leased by the school anymore, that means New Braintree now has their building back on their lap. And it's gonna increase their expenses specifically to their town, um, for the overhead in that school. Well, and that was my point. They're gonna have to lease, they'd have to lease or sell the school. And then if we need the space later, it's gone. And the cost to build a new school would be.
It's a fine line and I don't know enough about the regional school agreement. But once you take the elementary school out of New Braintree. If I'm correct, New Braintree owns the building already. That's why they're responsible for all the maintenance and capital upgrades, just like we are for Ruggles. So once they take out the activities, what does the school have to say about anybody like Hope going in there unless the board of selectmen say, let's bring Hope in? Because it's no longer a school thing. But all the discussions have been from the school board, not the Braintree Selectmen. So what I'm trying to say is however far they've gotten, it's not been because of the Braintree, New Braintree Board of Selectmen. It's because the schools have gotten to a certain point. As if it's going to be their property when they pull their elementary school out of there. And that's a nice idea, but.
The town's gonna bring in the Hope, not, not the school.
That's my point. But nobody from the town is talking to them, just the school committee. Just, that's what I mean. And the school committee will have no say the day it happens, right?
There's one meeting where school officials went to the New Braintree Selectmen and told them of, of. Put potential tenant for the building in their, um, adult education, eighteen and up. And public education is through twenty-two for disabled and these people are there. So it would keep it a school if they could lease it to them, but the school officials said it's the town's decision. Not theirs.
So the s-. School, well, the regional school district would still run it. Because it's at twenty-two or under based on the disability issue.
They have students in that category that they would put into that program if that happened.
Regional school wouldn't run it. The program would run it.
No, what I mean is the regional.
It would play students.
District would manage the tenant lease. Because they're still considering it a school.
I don't think so. I don't think.
I don't think so.
See, well, that's where I'm kinda, that's a lot of the questions that aren't there that by saying this, you're not telling me the whole story. So I, I need to go to the meeting.
My guess is they're.
And I guess what we need to do is find out if finance committee can. Reschedule. But they asked for. When was the response they wanted so that they at least could adjust if necessary?
What finance committee members.
Thank you, yeah.
Come at what day. Maybe I'll ask them what day this could be.
My, my guess is the schools acted as a facilitator because A, it's in their, it's in their interest. And B, it's gonna sell it to the town in a way that's financially manageable, maybe profitable for the town. So it may be that New Braintree will welcome this. And we won't know until we go to this meeting, but they may be welcoming this for a source of revenue for the town. Um, we won't know until we get those, all the semantics worked out.
I'm not talk, I've talked to at least one of their selectmen. I have a different impression. That's all.
Well, I said, I'm saying maybe. I don't know. I don't, I don't.
And, and I understand that. So I'm not trying to, and I won't speak for them either. I'm just saying that. I wasn't getting a warm and fuzzy feeling about the school committee's decision. And how they came to it.
Um, I know a lot of the Okham parents. Are not happy with the way their kids are being.
Busted.
Yeah. Well, it's what kindergarten in first grade? Kindergarten in first grade, which is a total of three classes in New Braintree, follows about fifty or sixty kids. And then second through six is an Okham. Cause their bus, they're picked up from their roots. And then they go to the school and I guess there's a waiting time. Before the New Braintree bus comes to get them, to take them to New Braintree. So those kindergarten in first graders is on the bus. I think they said about an hour. And I could see where parents would get upset if your kindergarten first grader was spending an hour on the bus in the morning.
And unfortunately, it sounds like this is something that the school committee can do by their own choice anyways. It's with the regional agreement. It's out of our hands no matter what, un- unless we change the school committee members out.
No, they need our vote from all five towns before they can do this.
I mean, the busing they're doing now.
Well, yeah, they can manage themselves into the ground if that's what they choose or move themselves up on top of the mountain. It all depends on what the choices they make. Um. And I don't know them well enough, so I'm not trying to point to anybody as a decis- I don't know. I'm just trying to throw it out. There's extremes. They could run something into the ground or they can bring it back up.
Decision to close the schools accounts people in New Braintree. Can't be done without them saying this.
And we need a unanimous five town vote for that, don't we?
Just to get it to that level. Oh, right. It's, it's a majority. That's why they need the forms from each board to be there. And therefore, all of the boards have a quorum and therefore the majority of that. And that then would lead to a November. First public hearing that would also be presented by the. School committee and all the board of selectmen members that, from the various towns. Or a minimum quorum of each one. So the eighteenth and the first are two dates we need to see if we can commit to. And they're asking by the end of the week. If we can't, to notify them so they can start to try to look at rescheduling. So, do we want to? Do we see any problem with?
I think it's important to go.
The first? November first also as a follow-up to this one, if it. If this one works, then the first is the same argument you had for.
What day of the week is that? Thursday?
Thursday.
That shouldn't be a problem, Thursday.
So.
I punched you in my phone already, so I, I shouldn't be missing meetings. I'm trying to get my calendar. They're giving me vo- audible reminders.
I do understand that. So right now, I guess we'll try to move forward as if the eighteenth and the first are.
I'm sure.
Dates will meet. And if we're lucky enough, they can reschedule. If not, hopefully, we'll just catch up.
You may wanna sit on that school committee meeting too and listen to it.
If you're gonna have to push it off for three weeks, it might not be in your best interest either. So I understand that.
Finance implications and impacts.
Yeah.
They do, so.
So.
Now, is that, that must be a public meeting. Anybody can go, right?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Both the eighteenth and the first. Anybody can go from.
Suppose you get the school resource center right over at their.
Anybody.
Auxiliary building?
Yeah, they're, uh.
Meeting room.
At least the first one. I don't know if they confirmed the location of the second one.
Next one might have to be, uh, school, high school because of the size.
You might have five towns showing up at that point. I do have a question about this for anybody that may have, and I know you've got some history with the school committee, Charlie. But the joint public meet, okay. A joint public hearing must be held by the school committee along with the boards of selectmen of all member towns. And that's the November first one?
Mm-hmm.
It's a public hearing, but the question I have on that is. It's a public hearing, but the question I have on that is. Do the Boards of Selectmen still have a vote? In anything that's voted at that meeting, cause they said it has to be presented by both the Board of Selectmen and the school committee.
That I don't know, because the state went and changed our agreement. Originally, it was if the children K to six were going to the another town. Then the two towns had to have town meeting votes to do that.
Okay.
Now, whether. And then the state said, no, because that usurps the power of the school committee. Which has the right, they're almost, they're autonomous once the budget's approved and.
I think the regional agreement is available on the website to, if you could read it, there's a section about school.
Thank you very much, I'll I'll read up on that, help better know what I'm. What role I play in these meetings, other than just sit and listen.
Well, we do want to need our approval to to move forward with it, but this I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a long guy, it's gonna be a long discussion.
All right, I believe that wraps up our agenda, do you have anything on the Town Administrator's Report, Andrew, you'd like to? Speak to or call out?
Um, I know in our last meeting we were talking about looking at our options as far as fiber in town. Um, I did have a good conversation with the Town Administrator Princeton about kinda how they had pursued it in their town and. Uh, they had established a municipal light plant, tried to implement that approach, and I guess. When they did that, um, they kinda went through this whole process and then the town actually funded the replacement of all the poles in town to try to get the. Five to to make it, uh, so they could run the fiber and at the end of the day. They actually ended up disbanding the, or they're in the process now of disbanding the municipal light plant. And Charter is actually coming in and doing the fiber connections under an MBI grant program. So, my next steps is I was gonna try to reach out to Charter and MBI and see. Kind of the logistics of that to see if that's something that we can get, get into that same program, I guess Peter Stan's doing a similar program. Program as well.
What's the MBI?
Um, that's broadband institute, so they kinda ran the whole. Middle mile program to a bunch of town halls, we are actually one of those towns that was connected through fiber. But it doesn't extend out to the residents and that's that's that, that key component that's missing, so.
Is that something?
They're kinda like the high-power transmission lines and not the local.
I got you. So that's, I guess that's.
That may be a cost-effective way to do it and that may be something, as I said before, we could put on the town to. To subcontract the running of those cables, then.
And I think that's what Princeton had looked at doing, you know, creating a municipal light plant that would be the billing conduit, so they would basically. Do all that fiber work and then kind of bill the residents for, uh, for the use through the through the municipal light plant, but because they got. Now working with Charter and Charter's doing it under the MBI program, so now it's. They won't have that cost, that direct cost to the residents, so I guess it's kind of working out to see what programs. How how Charter can really kinda get involved in this.
If we're talking about fiber, I think most people in town that have internet would love to get the chance at fiber. And of course, the people that don't have internet would love to get a chance at internet, period.
Right.
Um, I'm very much in favor of looking into if we even have to, the town subcontracting someone to run fiber. Through the town to make sure we get it everywhere, then you know, then people just have to pay to have themselves connected. Which is a traditional hookup, they're gonna go from the pole, uh, to the service in the house, which is what anybody pays for with with a cable or anything. Or a satellite dish, whatever, they're paying for their connection in. But I really think it is the responsibility of this community to make sure everyone has the same option, the same availability. You've been saying that right along and it's very true.
I know it's as far as cost, I mean, I know how many final numbers, but when we looked at. Running fiber from this building to the public safety complex, to have a private company come in and do it, um, that was about fifteen thousand dollars for that, for that.
From here just to there?
From here to there.
It's not bad at all, actually.
Part of that might be too, it's a finite thing, if they're in, if they're running a lot, repetition and the ability to run longer spans.
Pricing for more.
Yes, volume discount, for sure.
But.
Oh, I would think so.
It's gonna be a matter of getting a service done.
Step creates a higher level of equipment, because now they're gonna wanna run a couple crews, they don't wanna be sitting on it for three years. You know, so at at a certain point, there's like, you don't get the benefit for a lot.
I think we have less than a hundred miles of road in town total.
So that's the question, whether or not you have to upgrade, if pole upgrades is part of that too, you know, can you run it on the existing poles or can you put in a forty-five foot pole versus thirty?
That shouldn't matter, that's, the height of those poles are strictly based on national grid's voltage level. The height, not necessarily. Charter, I think, is the second to bottom line, the bottom is Verizon, I think.
Verizon's bottom, Charter's above it and then you you work up in voltage, so. Depends who it is, if we do.
Well, but the thing is, now, when you got that price, was it a price that also Charter would have accepted using? If we had it installed or we install it now, it's all ours and we're stuck in some license agreement with National Grid of Verizon on attaching to the pole. Cause they might allow you to run it, but don't do any, like, run it, leave three loops to give them like ten feet of fiber to do whatever and then go to the next pole and then they do all their work. Because.
I'm not sure that the, the, the details off the top of my head, I'm not sure, I I just remember that number sticking out when we were looking at running it. From this building to that building to get the fiber going.
I would suspect that, um. Part of the contractual agreement you make with Charter would be that we want a service plan to, it's our wires. To, you know, including the cost of the town, a a price to service that, but certainly not gonna do it for free, it's our wire. But that might be a reasonable expense to have.
They might have their own subcontracting too.
Sometimes they won't accept any work somebody else does, that's just a standard company line that you get stuck with, so that's why I'm like, you gotta find out what they're gonna say.
Sure we'll still own it, but, but that's the thing, and if they realize you're looking to bid it, they may wanna commit and be competitive and do it themselves. Um, the unions may want that as well, so if if we're really serious about looking for bids, we may find that they step up and. Be a more reasonable number to us.
What I would like to do, to start with, one is, yeah, give me the big lump sum to do the entire sound, that's just whatever. But if we're not doing that, we've gotta choose some main arteries in this town and get it. But if that's all we're doing on fiber, we still gotta get old-fashioned cable to every other street that doesn't have it. Or or put fiber in for those and make sure, you know.
Start with those.
But right, they've, we've got people in this town that have been waiting for a long time to get something more than a shaky satellite dish. Hoping they can talk on the internet. And at a minimum, I wanna be able to go before the town at annual town meeting and say, this is what it's gonna cost to do just that. So that's my priority level. It's October two thousand eighteen. And by April, I want that number so we can fit it into the budget, fit it into the concept, fit it into the capital plan, the warrant, so it can be on the warrant for June. That's my opinion, that's my request.
There should be a capital project.
Well, it would be something, but it's a capital project that I think is gonna be up there, but I think this town needs it that bad. To get commercial development in some of these things, all it takes is internet and they can turn a rundown building and turn it into an office building.
It can be spread out over a couple of years too, we don't have to necessarily do it all at once. Even if we've told people, hey, within four years, everyone's gonna have fiber, people would be pretty happy with that, but I would agree, we need to start with the outskirts first, which is kinda tough, cause you're gonna make the runs there. But some of those outlined folks that haven't had it really should get, step up up on the list, and I know Charter wants to do it the other way around, they wanna hit everybody that has it first. Um, you know, it may be that's when we pick up the slack, maybe maybe they come and bring to the main avenues and we pick up some of the stuff.
It's also a possible mass works grant. If it's an economic development and it'll help the schools with their internet, because it will run right by the school.
Cost per mile.
I'm just saying it's impossible, we've got many mass works things we could dream of.
Their priority of the mass works grants, uh, most recently has been. Private part, public partnership ready to go based off of the best, the direct investment dollars that they do when they issue the award. So like if, say, they had something to do with the ferry. Somebody was looking to go to Barry Pool, but they needed. They needed an infrastructure project connected, I think that that's kind of the top-tier mass works grants that they're giving out. But I think this one, uh, uh, fit under site readiness, that's kinda what they're more tailoring at. They know missing infrastructure piece that could bring in future all.
It affect, it would certainly affect the whole community.
Yeah.
You need to sign this as well.
I'll put a big, get them involved, I guess, as a compliment.
Some other stuff recently.
I appreciate it, but these are some of the core things I really think we. We need to do on our end, the planning, the prep, get the numbers so that. When these economic development opportunities come, we're actually, we're there, not like, oh, let me figure that out and then three years that opportunity left and we're. Still trying to catch up on outdated tech.
And if it's gonna hit the town meeting floor for vote, for funds, we gotta be, like I said, chief of the the dark stuff, we can be more specific and real precise.
And there aren't a lot of houses that have difficulty then going from the pole to their house. Because they, their house might be eight hundred feet off.
That's on them.
It's on them, but it's also something the town can consider based on how we wanna look at it, where we can do betterment taxes and. Help finances, so they just add to their tax bill for four years and they pay it off, so it's not as a front hit, but they get it done. And if we can do that, say, maybe there's thirty, forty people in interested, now it actually rolls into. Something worth doing that you wouldn't just do for one person, but that's something that I think.
Usually those long runs.
Preaching out.
Are multiple poles set up on their property, if they're underground, you would hope they have a low voltage conduit span running through, so I don't think that should be a big issue.
I know it's an issue on James Street.
How is the power getting?
I don't know how they get their power, but I know that the, uh. Cable wants to charge them. I think it was almost like a thousand dollars or something to provide service where if it was your house or my house, they give you service for free. Because you're only forty feet away from the pole.
And it's already attached.
I mean, that that's what I'm saying is cable is at the same pole as her power, it just doesn't make it to her house.
Right, the power gets here somehow, it's, it's, it's so unlikely somebody would bury a a power conduit and not put a low voltage conduit at the ground at the same time.
Oh, no, 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 nowadays, you're right, go back ten years, people are still wondering what the internet was.
I think National Grid.
Yeah, but they had phone and they had.
I think Greg needs to say.
One pole.
Yeah, that's it, they'll they'll.
That's what that goes to.
Yeah, and after, after one hole, it's not.
And that's not.
We're just hand sanding a pile of papers. But it's, the other thing is, it's it's low voltage, so they can almost direct bury it with a quick ditch switch. But they gotta pay someone to run the ditch switch the whole way. I don't know if they would direct bury it, but I think they can because of the type of, it's just. Anyway, I believe that covered everything, did any selectman have anything specific you'd like to report on before we close the meeting? Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye, meeting is closed at nine oh three P M, October first, two thousand eighteen.